All right, welcome. And I'm calling the meeting to order, which is our annual meeting town of Sebastopol on Tuesday, April 20th at 6:00 PM. And I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since there's a few people in the audience that we do not know, we'll introduce ourselves. And also, there is a process after the infamous April election. And then we'd ask you in the audience to identify yourself. Amy, would you like to do the officers first?
Yes, I would. So if the newly elected can stand up, please. Raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, then state your name.
Aye, Dan Wolfe.
Having been elected to the town board.
Having been elected to the town board.
Of the Thomas of Astapool.
The Thomas of Astapool.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Don't say that.
All right. So if our clerk would introduce herself, we'll go down here and then start with the audience.
Amy Flack, 4818 County Road P.
Martine, 4675 Matthew Road.
Jeanne Vogel, 4693 Windermere Drive.
Dan Wolfe, 4774 Bark Road.
Linda Waite, 5075 Bluff Court.
Derek Denil, 4832 County P.
Would you like to start, sir? You.
Mike Carr, 5039 County Highway P.
I'm sorry, I did not get your name, sir.
Mike Carr.
Oh, Mike. With the mask on, you don't recognize anybody. Sorry.
Veronica Carr, 5039 County Highway P.
Alisa Lanten, 330 North Joliet Avenue.
Kealan Matavideo, this is her big fire department.
Cam Seiler, 6155 South Shoreside Circle.
Lynn Collins, 4358 Glidden Drive.
Megan Coles, 5959 Dennis Drive.
Helen Coles, 5985 Dennis Drive.
Derek Collins, 4358 Glidden Drive.
Tammy Esses, 4604 Backdon Road.
Beth Rash, 5190 Bluff Court.
And I think the last two are our video officers.
Lanny Chapman, Glidden Drive, Anne.
No, no, Derek, I mean, uh, Rock Country Road.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to all of you. First item of business would be to approve the minutes of our annual meeting from May 19th, 2020. By the way, during the annual meeting, electors may make a motion to approve if you'd like. If not, the board can.
I will move to approve the minutes of our previous annual meeting held on May 19th, 2020.
Motion by Linda, second by?
Our second half.
Second by Jeanne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right. Special reports. First item of business will be a presentation, it's a video presentation of our audited financial reports. Due to COVID last year and this year, the gal that does the work for us is going to be doing it through video. I did have an opportunity to sit through it all. I think she does a great job and she is available. If someone has a specific question, we can call her. She is prepared to answer those questions. So a little bit of electronic wizardry.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth McMasters. I am a member of the audit team for the town of Sebastopol. I've worked closely with the town, with Amy and a few of the board members over these last, I don't even know how many years it's been, probably six or seven years, I would say. So I want to say thank you for allowing me to do this video for you in this world of COVID. It sounds like, you know, this video worked last year, so we're going to keep that up. And if anybody has any questions, Amy has my contact information and I can certainly be available to answer any of those questions. But without further ado, I'll get started. On page one, this is the whole goal of our audit. This is our independent auditor's report. So we have a responsibility to provide an opinion on the financial statements and whether we believe that they are materially correct. So material being the key word. We develop risk assessments, we take a look at the internal controls of the town, and we determine, you know, at what levels we see, you know, it would skew a user of the financial statements, you know, if there was an error within an account somewhere. So we might not find an error that's $20 or even $100, but we do believe that these financial statements are materially correct for the 2020 calendar year. So if, right at the top of page two, that's where it actually gives our opinion, and so we say right in that first sentence, "In our opinion, financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So that's essentially a clean opinion and, you know, it doesn't get any better than that. So flipping now to page five, this is the start of the numbers portion of the audit. When the financial statements are prepared, there are essentially two sets of statements within here. So on page five is the start of the first set, and this is recording the financial statements on a long-term basis. So this is not the set of financial statements that you're used to looking at, you know, at every board meeting when you might be looking at budget-to-actual information. This is going to, you know, take all of those expenditures and revenues that you're incurring throughout the year and get them to a long-term basis. So for example, when you spend money on something, you know, let's say you bought a truck, instead of showing it as an expenditure, it's going to show up on the balance sheet, which shows that you're going to use this truck for, you know, a five-year, 10-year time period, and it's slowly going to depreciate over that time. So that's one example, and there's a whole bunch of different items that can affect this statement. So one of those items that I always like to point out, just because it's not something that, you know, everybody talks about at all the time, if you look towards the top in the assets section, right in the middle of that section, there's the net pension asset. So what that is, is the town is a participant in the Wisconsin retirement system, and the Wisconsin retirement system is a pretty much fully funded system. Depending on market conditions, some years it might be overfunded and some years it might be underfunded by, you know, just a small percentage. So some years it's a pension asset, if it's slightly overfunded, some years it's pension liability. So in 2020, you can see it was a little bit of a pension asset, and that's just the town's share of that asset. So, you know, it's just showing that the town would have 11,000 bucks if something were to happen, you know, and the whole system tanked. Down in the liability section, about the middle of the page, you can see that net pension liability is a zero this year because it was a pension asset, but you can see last year it was about $12,000 in 2019. So that, that doesn't necessarily mean you have cash in the bank by any means or anything. This is just a required item that has to be recorded, that if something were to happen to the system. And for Wisconsin, like I said, because they're fully funded, it doesn't matter as much, but for states like Michigan or Illinois, it's a severely underfunded pension, so I can tell you it never, you never see an asset on their books, and that liability is much, much greater. So that's why it's a required disclosure, because that could really skew, you know, the financial operating results if something were to happen. The other item that I wanted to point out on this schedule is in, still in the assets section, towards the bottom of it, you'll notice there's the two lines relating to the capital assets. And one of the messages that I think you're going to kind of see across, you know, our discussion today is that COVID was something that not every, nobody expected that to happen. But overall, I think our municipalities and the way the economy responded, you're not going to see as much of a hit as what I think everybody thought when we were in that March, April, even June, July timeframe, when things were still, you know, getting back up and running. So the one thing with the capital assets is that people weren't necessarily spending money on the things, you know, they weren't out buying trucks and whatever it might be, just because everybody was kind of just waiting to see what would happen. But you'll see there's a decrease if you compare, not in the non-depreciable, that wouldn't, that's like the land and things like that, that, you know, the value holds all throughout, but in the depreciable section, you'll see that decrease. It's not that the town was doing anything or got rid of anything, had any work going on, that's just the normal depreciation being recorded for items that were recorded in previous years, and they're slowly depreciating year by year by year. So, and I'll show you the footnote that kind of goes with that a little bit later. On the next page, on page six, this is the income statement version of the long-term financial basis that I was kind of talking about. This one isn't quite as interesting in the way that it puts it together, but one line that I want to point out, if you are in about the middle of the page, you'll see general revenues, and in about the middle of that section, there is a line that is titled "Federal and State Grants and Other Contributions Not Restricted to Specific Functions." Oh, I can't talk. And what that is made up of is that has routes to recovery money put into it, which I'm sure everybody's heard of. That was the money that, you know, came from the federal government, it flowed through the state of Wisconsin, and that was to help, you know, helped offset some of the costs that a lot of places were going to incur, such as, you know, putting Plexiglas up. It was a huge election year. There was a lot of costs that, you know, had to be dealt with and logistics figured out in order to make sure it was a safe place buying hand sanitizer and everything. And I know, like, the town worked with the school district, and there was a lot of collaborating across many of our municipalities to make sure that, that funding was used appropriately and the help was given where it was needed. So it was definitely refreshing to see, you know, how much people collaborated, like I said, with school districts, or, you know, it may have been businesses, whatever it might have been. So moving on to page seven, this is the start of the statements that are going to record everything on kind of a short-term basis. So you're going to see, everything is recorded as revenues and expenditures, and that's going to be the comparison to your budget. So these are the statements that I think most people are most interested in. On page seven, the biggest thing that I want to talk about is towards the bottom, and that's the fund balance, which is the reserves that the town is carrying over year to year. And that's also, we take a look at what those values end up being at the end of the year, because it's an indication if the town is going to be able to float their cash balances all throughout the year, just because there is timing differences from when state aids come in or property tax revenue. And you've got to make sure that those reserves are high enough that you're going to be able to keep up with your expenditures, because those stay, you know, there might be some spikes and everything, but you're going to have expenditures, you're going to have payroll all year round. So that's always something that we take a look at. I'll get into the details of, like, the committed and assigned amounts a little bit later on in the presentation. The first item to discuss is the unassigned balance. So you'll see that that decreased from last year. It went from 250,000 in 2019 to about 188,000. And some people might think, oh, you know, that's, it's decreasing, what's going on? So the way that I like to analyze this is you also have to take a look at the committed and the assigned amounts. So the committed amounts, which would be items that are set aside by board action, that decreased, or I'm sorry, increased quite substantially. So that means that the town has plans in place that they are planning to spend that money in a future period, and they have, you know, pretty much pots of money set aside for those items. Same thing with the assigned. Assigned is typically items in the subsequent year budget that are assigned, and that's done through the budgeting process for 2021, and that also increased. So although there's a decrease in unassigned, you know, there's an increase in the other categories, that the way to think about it is, as long as the town is spending money in 2021 for the items that they knew they were setting aside money for, then there's no reason to be concerned at all. And even if I compare the 187,000 that's in unassigned, if I take a look at, you know, what's your 2021 budgeted expenditures, that 187,000 is about 15% of the 2021 budgeted expenditures, which is right in normal ranges, and that also complies with the town's policy for what they want to keep set aside in that, you know, those rainy day funds. So overall, you're seeing fluctuations in this, but I would say that everything indicates that the town is planning and they are right in tra, right on track with what they intended to do, you know, barring whatever happens in 2021. As, as everyone knows, we didn't expect COVID, so hopefully we don't have any surprises that are going to pop up in 2021. Page eight isn't anything that I'll talk about too much. This is just showing the reconciliation between the two different sets of statements, the, you know, recording on the revenues and expenditures basis versus that long-term basis that I was kind of talking about. Page nine is a condensed version of a lot of the detail that you'll see in the back schedule, so I'll kind of give you the highlights of what's going on in some of these fluctuations, and then I'll show you how that ties into the back schedules a little bit later. So in the revenue section, you'll notice the intergovernmental. So intergovernmental is, you know, anything going between governments, so that can come from the state, it can come from the county, et cetera. You know, everybody heard about that funding that was the routes to recovery money that was moving around, and maybe you'd anticipate, oh, we saw the increase on that government-wide statement that I mentioned earlier, why don't we see an increase in there? And there's a couple of things going on there. So in 2019, there was local road improvement funds that were received, and those were not planned to be continued into 2020. So that was about 40 grand, and then when you factor in the fact that the routes to recovery money was received in 2020, that overall, it's kind of a wash in what the town was receiving. But you'll also see, you know, you're not spending as much in public works with, because you don't have the local road improvement program going on. So for the changes in revenue that we're going to note, there's equal changes in expenditures, which we can kind of talk about. So into the expenditures section, you'll notice the general government expenditures went up. The largest component of that was the Muscat property demo that I know was a big project the town had going on. So that's a pretty big increase in expenditures there, but obviously not anything that's going to continue on, or not continue on into the, at the levels that it was in 2021. Then public works, this is that line that I was saying, the local road improvement plan or program, those expenditures decreased because there's, you know, not money there to be spent. I think this was the line that we definitely saw fluctuations across many of our municipalities, just because people were pretty conservative with everything going on with COVID. They didn't want to start all of these, you know, reconstruction projects or anything. There are a few places that, you know, the larger places, I would say, that they wanted to be a source for the economy to keep moving, but that was, you know, the bigger county-type size places that did that. The smaller towns and villages were pretty conservative in what they were spending in that regard. Another contributing factor to that public works line is also snow removal. There was a lot less of that in this last year. One last thing that I wanted to point out is if you look down in the debt service, you'll notice there's no principal and interest, and the debt is fully paid off, so there was no principal and interest payments in 2020. All right. Skipping ahead to page 12. One thing with COVID going on, there were no new standards implemented in this last year. A lot of the ones that were planned to be implemented were put on hold just because there was such an effort that was needed to react to COVID. Nobody had time to be implementing standards. So a lot of them were put on hold. But if you remember from last year, there was a standard that we had implemented in 2019 relating to the custodial funds, and just as a refresher, since I know it's still a fairly new statement, those are the funds that are being held for other governments at the end of the year. So you think, well, what does the town have? It's primary, primarily property tax collections. So you'll see that there is a pretty large decrease in the cash received between 2019 and 2020. The reason for that is not that, you know, it's not a concerning item, it's just timing of when those property tax revenues were coming in. So they're primarily collected between December of 2020 and January of 2021. So these are just the amounts being held at the end of the year. In 2020, only 12% of the total tax roll had been collected as of December versus 2019, 37% of it had been collected. So that's not anything to cause concern. You'll see a large decrease, but it's purely just a timing of when those property tax revenues are being taken in. All right. Then the notes, as you continue on, you'll start to see all the wording. There is not a whole lot of changes there at all. Like I said, with COVID, everything kind of halted in terms of changing standards, you know, with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, you know, no major changes there. I'll skip ahead to page 21. On that page, towards the bottom, you'll see a required note disclosure that we have, and this lists all of the times that the town went over budget in regards to their expenditures. This is a required disclosure, and it's not necessarily meant to be a slap on the hand, it's just to point it out. And I think that there were a few larger ones this year, but they have explanations, so I just wanted to kind of talk about those quickly. First one that you'll see, building inspection. This was something that I think everybody did not anticipate, given the economy with COVID. Everybody was staying at home, working on their properties. It resulted in much more building inspection costs, but also revenues. So on this schedule, we only show the expenditure side of it, but what you're not seeing is that the building inspection revenue was $42,000 over budget. So those costs are not, you know, coming out of the town's pockets by any means, it's covered by the revenue coming in, just because it's a charge for a license or permit. Then if you go one line down, you'll see the other general government, and that's kind of what I talked about earlier with that Muscat property. And I know that was, the town worked closely on that, and they've got plans in the future. So overall, there's nothing concerning on this schedule. Everything that the town may have went over on, there's either a revenue to cover it or revenues, you know, maybe in a future period to cover that deficiency. This is a reason that those unassigned fund balances are set aside, is to sometimes cover some of these excess expenditures that, you know, weren't budgeted or, you know, may not have had a super accurate budget, just because of unknowns with estimates or what a project's actually going to come in at. So nothing concerning there. Moving on, the pages that I'm kind of skipping over, they all tie into those front schedules, and please let me know if you have any questions, but really, there wasn't a whole lot of, you know, anything that was alarming or, you know, any huge fluctuation that we hadn't already discussed. Moving on to page 24, this is that capital asset schedule that I was kind of talking about, and you'll see there's not a lot of activity. This was what we saw across the board, you know, people weren't buying things just because nobody knew what was going to happen with the economy. Overall, if you look at the very bottom line of that schedule, you'll see the balance decreasing, and that's just because of that depreciation, you know, of 193,000, and that's just based on whatever assets are in place, how long of a life they have, they're slowly being, you know, used up, so the value's depreciating. On page 25, about the middle of the page, this is the debt limit that the town has. The town currently has no debt, so I just want to point out what that value is, and that's just something that the town can take into consideration as they're planning in future years and any plans that, you know, might relate to future debt obligations. I'm going to skip ahead. The next chunk of pages that I'm going to skip mainly relates to disclosures relating to that Wisconsin retirement system. When this GASB standard was put in place and we had to record it, it almost doubled the size of our financial statements in many cases. So I'm going to skip ahead to page 32, just because there's a lot of godly cook that isn't very interesting, I don't think, sometimes. Page 32, this is the detail of what is in the committed and assigned fund balances. So you'll see there's some things set aside, committed by the board, that's what that, by definition, committed means, it's set aside by board action. And there's a few different items in there, town hall capital, revaluation, town park capital, communication and technology, that's one of those items that we're definitely seeing an increase of just due to COVID. Everybody is needing that communication and technology in different ways. So a few new categories, if you were to compare this note to last year, and as I said earlier, if, as long as the town is sticking to their expenditures falling in these categories and they don't have large amounts of expenditures, you know, that they weren't anticipating, their fund balances are right exactly where they should be, and they are definitely a healthy version. And at the bottom of the page, you'll see the minimum fund balance policy of 172,000, and that would relate to that unassigned line that we were looking at earlier, and what was that value? It was 187,000, so you can see that the town is above that minimum fund balance amount. Skipping ahead to page 35, this is a more detailed version of the schedules that we just went into, so you can see some of the items that we talked about. The top portion, taxes, next session, section, special assessments, goes down to intergovernmental revenues, and you'll see at the bottom of that section is other state grants, that is the routes to recovery money, that was not budgeted for, nobody expected that to happen. Licenses and permits is the next one. You can see in the permit section, there's building permits, and that's where that revenue is way high up. The middle column is the actual, and you can see the next column over, it gives a variance, and it was 42 grand over budget. So a good indicator that people were at home doing some projects. On page 36, same type of information, now we're just moving into the expenditure side of it, and you can see in that first section, the general government, towards the bottom, the building inspection, that shows that the expenditures were 38 grand over budget, but like I mentioned, this is that sked, that, this is that footnote that ties in to this line right here, the revenues were there to offset it. In the other general government, that was that Muscat property, so you can kind of see how, you know, the notes are tying into these detailed schedules. And finally, if you flip to page 38, as part of our audit, we take a look at the internal controls that the town has in place, and, you know, there are a few findings that we have. If I take a look at the findings, what I always like to do is compare it to the previous year and see what kind of changed from the last year, you know, if I was sitting in the boards or the, you know, a town residence shoes. For Sebastopol, there was no changes from the prior year. Findings are ranked, a material weakness being the most severe, then it goes to a significant deficiency, which is a little less severe, or no finding at all. So those are kind of the categories. So the town has two significant deficiencies, and if we look at what those significant deficiencies are, they start on page 40. The first one is the segregation of duties with the clerk treasurer position. So what this is, is there is not proper segregation of duties over the major items such as cash receipting, you know, a different person should be taking the cash receipts in versus who is depositing at the bank to make sure that, you know, those monies are getting to the bank, so on, so forth, with, you know, payroll or disbursements, those types of things. However, for the town's size, if you were to properly segregate the duties, Amy would never get anything done. So it just, it's a finding that we have to have. I would not anticipate that the town would ever be able to get rid of this unless they want to spend more money to have another position hired, which just is not economically feasible. So we're at the bottom of this finding, you'll see the management responds to it, and, you know, management believes that the cost of segregating those duties does not outweigh the benefits. So this is a very, very common finding, and I would not anticipate that the town would be able to get rid of this. So. Then moving on to page 41, this is the continuation of the findings. So this is the second one, and it relates to preparation of the annual report. This is another one that did not change from the prior year, nor what I think it would change going forward. This is just the fact that CLA or Clifton, Larson, Allen, we assist in preparing these financial statements. You know, I know Linda and other board members do a full review, as does Amy, of these financial You know, um, I know Linda, um, and other board members do a full review, as does Amy of these financial statements and they take responsibility for them. But as a service, we prepare them. Um, it takes a lot of, um, upkeep to make sure that these standards are followed. Um, and properly presenting the financial statements. So it's not something that I would anticipate the town being able to get rid of. So like I said, two very normal findings for the size of the town and I would anticipate that they, they are the same findings for years to come. So that is pretty much, um, the highlights of what was going on at the town of Sebastopol. Um, again, thank you for allowing me to do, um, you know, this through a video. And please let Amy or any of the other board members know if you have any questions. Um, and I will be happy to answer them as best I can. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Recorded for your enjoyment. Uh, any particular questions on any section here? Elizabeth is available if we decide to call and ask her for clarification if we're unable to do that. But any feedback from anyone? Alright, in that case, we will move on with our agenda. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Sturgeon Bay Fire Department's annual report. And we have tonight presenting this information is Kalen, who is the assistant fire chief. Wherever you'd like to go. You want to try a mic? Does that make it easier for you? I think, is that mic on, Laddie? Okay. Oh, sure.
Okay. I feel like I'm going back to everyone then, I'm sorry. Um, so like you said, uh, my name is Kalen Machvino. I'm the assistant fire chief. The chief apologizes he wasn't able to, um, be here tonight. Uh, there are copies up here that Amy made. If anybody needs a copy, I brought a couple extra ones too. So I'll just kind of, uh, hit the highlights of the report. If anybody has any questions, concerns, issues, um, I'll be happy to answer them. If I can't give you the answer tonight, I will definitely issue the answer or, um, get with the board to, uh, get you an answer. So, uh, this is our 2020, uh, annual report. Uh, the chief always writes a little letter, just kind of what happened throughout the year, what we are looking forward to, um, through the next year. So like everybody else, we were, um, challenged with COVID in our department. Um, just as a response and operationally how to keep our staff safe and our community safe. So, um, at no time did we, um, lack response, meaning, um, staff members or, um, uh, our response was never hindered because of COVID. It just made us change up a little bit of our operation and how we, um, internally handled, um, staffing, um, for our department. We had a very busy year last year, which I believe was our record high. Um, with, uh, over 1,500 calls, uh, 1,519 calls last year. Um, so that was a record high, I believe, for our department. Goes on to just, uh, state our mission statement and our statement of values, which you see every year on our annual report. And then we move on to our staffing. There was, um, one small change in our staffing last year. Um, and that was the addition of a part-time fire inspector. Um, he works a 24-hour, uh, 24-hour work week. Um, doing fire inspections, public education, and also, um, some of that time is spent training with our, our on-medi full-time staff. Um, we're currently fully staffed right now. Um, I hate to always say that because something inevitably always happens. So, um, myself, the fire chief, uh, work a 40-hour work week. And our, um, 12 career firefighters and then our part-time inspector, then we have 15 paid-on-call members, um, consisting of our three, uh, part-time shifts. Our stations have not changed. We still currently have our main station, um, right downtown on Michigan Street, uh, in the municipal building. And then our, our west side station is over on Oxford Avenue, right off the highway. So, nothing different there. Uh, we move on to our fire apparatus. Uh, we did have one change in 2020. That was the addition of Chief 11, which is a command vehicle, um, the assistant chief vehicle, the vehicle that I drive. Um, it mimics our, our Chief 10, which is our fire chief's vehicle. So, uh, pretty much identical vehicles. And we, we moved in our department, we moved to try to, um, make our apparatus more uniform. So our engines are identical, our command vehicles are identical and it just makes for a lot eas- easier, um, knowing where things are, uh, operationally. It just really works out, uh, really well for our department. So from there, we just moved to our, um, our total incidents. We saw is 1,518. Uh, Tonnas of Asta Pool, uh, we ran 84 calls. 76 of those were fire-related calls or fire-related incidents. Um, and then eight, um, EMR or medical assist calls. So, uh, although, uh, Sebastopol has their own first responder group, there are certain times that maybe they don't have, uh, first responder available. Uh, so Durco, uh, emergency services will contact us, um, if they need assistance or possibly just an additional addition to the, um, first responders. So, uh, at the bottom of that page, you'll see, um, response times. So Tonnas of Asta Pool, we had, uh, emergent was eight minutes, 31 seconds, or non-emergent were, uh, 10 minutes, 45 seconds. So. We take an average throughout the year. I always caution people on, on saying, well, that's your response time, that's what we expect. But, um, you know how Sebastopol is located, that, um, some responses are very quick, some take a little bit longer. So that's why we do an average of the response. So. Um, our next page is going to be your actual incident type. So it's broken down by all of our zones. So when you're just interested in is the Tonnas of Asta Pool. So it, it breaks down, um, how many of each call, um, that we have. So anything that is not the medical assist, they, we classify as a fire-related call or a, a fire response incident. So. Kind of self-explanatory on our, our incident type. And, um, the next page is going to be, uh, just our staff hour summary. Now I did catch a typo on this page for the Tonnas of Asta Pool. Under your, um, inspection hours, it says zero point, there's, uh, 2.06 hours. That should be 102.06. He is not that quick. Um, currently we have, um, Shane, who is our part-time inspector. Many of you have probably seen him out and about. He's doing, um, this year, our outline townships and our quarterly inspections. Which is a help. We're not taking two guys to do an inspection. It's, it's, um, it's one guy, um, doing the inspection. So he's able to, um, the hours are a little bit down versus the double the staff hours for two people. So, um, we'll, we'll, uh, see next year. It's, it's, uh, it's a benefit to get our guys into each, um, business just for, for knowing what's going on in there, the layout of businesses. So, um, you know, we'll kind of, at the end of the year, evaluate it and see if we change anything there. So, um, we conducted 129 inspections in the town and 16 re-inspections. So those were people with violations and didn't correct the violations and we had to go back, um, to do a re-inspection. Um, and then just our other miscellaneous hours, uh, public ed, uh, maintenance, uh, training, community service, um, outreach. So kind of our breakdown of, uh, the only thing that, and, and you guys get it on the monthly report, but, uh, burning permits that we, uh, issue for the town. Um, I believe there was 104. I don't put that on the annual report because we give you guys that on your, your monthly report as a tally. I think we had 104, um, um, burning permits that were, um, issued last year. Which, um, in my opinion is probably a little bit low. Cause of COVID, we were kind of shut down. The whole kind of community was shut down for a little while and people weren't, um, doing much. So. And then we get to, um, just our, our comparisons. So the first one is just our total, um, incident comparison. That's, um, our, for, uh, the department as a whole, um, our 15 19 calls that we did. And then if you turn one more page on the top of the page, you'll see the comparison for the town of Sebastopol. So we were actually down on calls for the town of Sebastopol, um, for 2020. Uh, we ran 90 calls in 2019 and 84, so we're down six calls, um, from the previous year. And then, um, the next, uh, few pages are just, uh, outlining kind of our overview of what our department does. Um, you know, what we do for response, community, um, um, community service and, um, education. You know, the type of response that we do, um, technical responses as well as, um, fire prevention inspections. And then just some kind of fun pictures throughout the year. And it gets into our ice and water. We all know that we live in a community surrounded by, um, water. So that keeps us fairly busy. Throughout the year, winter and, um, springtime, summertime. So, um, the rescue task force, um, Sturgeon Bay is, uh, designated as a rescue task force with the, the county um, for any hostile active event. Um, and we do a lot of training, um, with law enforcement and, uh, Durco Emergency Services, um, just to keep our skills proficient on that. And then our fire prevention and, um, community risk, uh, was, looked much different this year just because the schools, uh, a lot of the schools weren't in, uh, for 2020 weren't in session or were doing some sort of a hybrid. So we, um, there was only one, two schools, I believe, that we got into this year and actually did a fire prevention program. Um, otherwise we did a virtual station tour and, um, tried to inter- do some, um, virtual and online, uh, learning for the kids. So at least they still got some, um, fire prevention uh, through the school without us actually getting into the school, um, and teaching them that. So it worked out pretty good this year. Not ideal, but it was something better than nothing. So. Um, and then just some other pictures of, uh, some incidents. A couple of those I believe happened, at least one of them happened in the Tonnas of Asta Pool, I believe two of them, the top and the bottom were both Tonnas of Asta Pool incidents. Um, then community outreach, uh, we're the only, um, certified, uh, car seat technicians in the county. So we do, we do a lot of, uh, car seat installs and, um, the different programs that we, uh, help out with throughout the year. The last, uh, page is just some, um, additional training, uh, photos that we conducted throughout 2020. And then our beautiful lighthouse with the sunset behind it. So.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or concerns or?
Anyone in the audience?
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, just real quick, Kalen.
Yeah.
I've been involved with some fire up here in the water. Conversations with, uh, one of the fire chiefs, the pure fire chief on Chambers Isle. He's got a place on Chambers Isle. They actually have portable fire pumps. Have you seen what they have?
I haven't, I, I've seen photos of what they have.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, some of these places are hard to get to on the water and trying to take, tankering them in and we're surrounded by water. Some of these places, uh, have you ever considered that, prepositioning pumps or something like that, the hand? Some pumps you could carry down to the water for.
Yeah, so we do have a small pump on our boat. We have a 27-foot safe boat that, um, we keep in the water that does have a pump on it. Um, we share that boat with, um, Sturgeon Bay PD. Um, but as far as portable pumps, we haven't really, um, approached that, that, um, as of yet.
Well, it's just, it's just food for thought. That gets my, my second thing. You know, the Coast Guard has pumps on their boats too. And I believe they were standing by up in Sister Bay at one place that went, caught on fire. And they weren't notified or anything. And, and I'm talking to the fire chief in Gibraltar as well. And, uh, you know, I think anything on the water, I think possibly resources, including my resources, what I have, the barge and the tug. You know, should be taken into account and maybe, you know, ordinated sometimes. Cause I, you know, if there's a fire, fire on the water, fiberglass boat is just about impossible to put out. So sometimes it's better, especially if it happens in the marina, you know, and identifying what resources are available, um, along those lines. And just food for thought. You know, I have pumps in my garden we can use, I mean, things like that. Emergency, you know, we could take stuff out to a site, bring some chambers on fire and drop it. Haven't had to do it yet, but God forbid, it's just a possibility of it.
Okay, anyone else from the audience? From the board? Yes, Linda?
Um, looking at the equipment and the apparatus, so there are several trucks that hold that much water. They bring that much water with them.
Yep.
I know there's no such thing as an ordinary fire, but how far does 2,000 gallons of water go?
That'll, that'll get you, that'll get you, that's a lot of water.
That's a lot of, like a totally engulfed house.
Uh, that's not enough. But we also have, um, auto aid agreements. Um, we run a, uh, I'm sure the chief has talked to you guys about our Mavis, uh, which is a mutually box alarm system. So what it is, is it's, uh, pre-scripted cards. So, uh, depending on the incident that we're at, we can pull that card and it's pre-scripted. You don't have to think about it. You know you have these trucks coming from these departments, um, as well as backfilling, um, your station if you pull your resources out of your station. So that's one thing is, in, no department will ever leave their jurisdiction unmanned. Meaning if they are busy at an incident, they will always have coverage in case something else happens. We have auto aid agreements with, um, Jackson Port Lake Harbor for, uh, these areas. We have auto aid agreements with, um, Southern Door as well, um, to cover us, uh, to, to have that additional water. But, uh, any, uh, structured fire, uh, we are going to be calling a general arm, which is going to recall all 30 of our, um, personnel and, uh, all of our apparatus. So you do get all that water to respond. Okay, thank you.
One question on unauthorized burning. We had five incidents. Do you have any flavor for any of those incidents as to why they were not permitted? Any feel for that?
Um.
I mean, we've tried to do a good job of communicating that you issue the permits and that they're required, et cetera. So I'm just curious if there was any common thread there that we could try to address.
You know, I don't, without looking at exactly what, you know, what they were, um.
No problem.
But you know, sometimes it is strictly, people are like, I didn't know I needed a permit or I thought I could just burn. Or, um, I think now we've been doing it for a few years now that we've been issuing the permits. It's getting a lot easier, um, for people to just call us up and say, hey, we need a permit. You know, we run out there.
They're accustomed to it.
Um, I thi- I think it's getting easier. You know, that first year was a little bit of a learning curve, um, with, with everybody. Uh, but I think it is getting a little bit better. The unauthorized burning is sometimes somebody may have a permit and is, um, burning something maybe they're not supposed to. So we take a photo, Amy gets a copy of it, of the permit, um, so we know what they should be burning and what was permitted versus what maybe they are burning.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Say hello to Tim on our behalf. Hope he recovers quickly.
We hope so.
Maybe for next year he could come? Just kidding.
Yeah, he can, he can come next year.
I know. Alright, moving on with our agenda, before we get into the, uh, individual committee commission reports, the year-end review, I just wanted to take a moment and talk about, uh, three or four items that you might consider, uh, or we might consider somewhat of a, a major accomplishment for the year. And, um, we'll only take a minute to do that. The first one dovetails, uh, on our assistant fire chief here, which was we were able to, uh, extend our fire protection agreement with the city of Sturgeon Bay. Uh, we did a three-year extension with a 3% annual cap, which is great news. They give us good service and we've managed to come to a point where we can also afford the service, which is a key benefit. Uh, the second thing that we accomplished, and you heard it, uh, a little bit in Elizabeth's presentation with respect to, uh, uh, our financial statements. If you hadn't noticed, the Muscat property, which are the barns, mobile home and buildings across from the Mill Supper Club or adjacent to CNW Transport have all been disposed of. They were a health hazard. They were a tremendous eyesore. And they represented, uh, buildings that, by the way, were covered in asbestos. So it required special handling. But all of those buildings were removed and over time, uh, hopefully someone will come along and purchase that property from the owner. And, uh, it'll get restored and further improved. But at least that eyesore in the current time is gone. So, good news there. Uh, another item that happened last year is, some of you are aware, you all received some stimulus money, uh, to varying degrees and, and amounts. Well, the town also received some, uh, money from the federal and state government. In the case of our town, we received 43 or 44,000 dollars that we were given for COVID-related expenses. Well frankly, we didn't have all of those expenses. We did spend a little bit of money, I think about $5,000 to improve our voting area and also security for the town clerk. And with the money that was left over, we had our choice to give it back to the government, huh, which was kind of a joke. I, I don't think we'd ever want to give something back. But we had an option to give it back or we had an option to give it to another governmental agency. So I contacted the, uh, Sebastopol School and we offered them the remaining 38,000 dollars from the funds that the town received. And so those funds were transferred to the school and they used them for their COVID-related expenses, which were eligible. So we, I think, made a sign- So we, I think made a significant move and we already have a partnership with them with our park. I think that only reinforced that by giving them the ability to recover. I think they, and Amy helped me here, but I think their original list of expenses for COVID was around $90,000 that they had, that they delineated for us?
The original list of the school?
Yeah.
They dwindled it down to about $50,000 because they knew some of it wasn't going to be covered.
We made a significant contribution to help them deal with those costs, which in turn is passed on to a lot of the taxpayers in this room indirectly. And the last item isn't an accomplishment from last year, it's really a project for this year and next year as part of the continuing stimulus packages, the most recent one, the $1,400 or the $1.9 billion fund that was just approved this year in March. The town has received or will receive $260,000. We'll get half this year in June and the other half next year, I don't know what month. We are waiting for clarification on the eligibility for how we can spend that money. The three items that the government gave us off the top were water and sewer. We don't have water and sewer in our town, but the third one was broadband. There's other areas we're waiting for clarification. So over time, we'll, we'll look to try and figure the best way to utilize that money to improve the community. So just thought I would share that with you because many of you have perhaps seen it in the paper. Sebastopol got the second highest payment in the county. So with that, let's go on and start with the supervisors who will give you a recap of what's happened in their committees and look to the future. And I guess we'll start with the plan commission and Linda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because our population is greater than 2,500 people, we do have a seven-member plan commission. And as the name implies, the commission engages in planning activities to help establish land use policy for our Sebastopol community. The plan commission does not have any final decision-making authority, but it does make recommendations to the town board and to the county of Door on zoning and conditional use permits, again, relating to land use. We've had several significant matters over the last two years. And I would like to thank past members of the plan commission and our current members, and I'll give you their names shortly, for donating many, many hours of time and effort toward our plan commission. Our current members are Mary Ellen Ramstak, Derek Denil, Jay Hubner, Laird Salisbury, Terry Riker, Hugh Zettel and myself. So again, a big thank you to all of them for their time, which, most of which has been volunteered and uncompensated. The plan commission's current item is a short-term rental ordinance. The most recent working draft of this ordinance is always posted to the town's website, so anyone can take a look at the most recent draft. We do have a public hearing to gather additional input and that is scheduled for Tuesday, May 11th, right here at the town hall at 5:30 PM. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Next would be Mark Hane, who was chairman of the Park and Rec Board. Mark?
Thank you, Dan. The Park and Rec Committee has joined a 50/50 financial partnership with Sebastopol School in regards to ballfield improvements. We still own the park, but Sebastopol is joining us financially. We are starting a five-year plan for improvements of the fields and other aspects, bleachers, dugouts, scoreboards and such. A lot of it has to do with safety. The school is very big in the safety of the kids, which we are as well. But the age of the park, the ADA, all this stuff comes together. The park is, I would say, Dan, you can help me out with this one, going on 40 years, 30, 35 years? Somewhere around there. So stuff is starting to fall apart and fail and, you know, we all know as age catches up, what happens. So we're working very well hand in hand with the school on all these details. One of the things we did last year was the baseball field, redid the infield. It's a very big project, regrading, leveling, just safety issues there. This year, we're going to do in the fall, after the last game is played, we're going to do the left field, which has a major water issue. We're going to regrade that. Try to, try to get more games played, basically what we're trying to do. The spring of the year, it's a swamp over there, trying to alleviate a lot of that Another project is the pickleball court slash tennis courts. Dan has been spearheading that, he is the resident expert on that. I will let him talk in a second about that. We also do the Clark's Lake Dam and that's always an issue too with high water, low water. People want their boats in now, people want their boats out now. This year with no snow, it's our challenge, we didn't have any water runoff, so the lake is a little lower and we'll just keep on plugging along. Dan, you want to talk about?
Sure. If any of you are tennis players and you've used our courts, you know that they're in difficult, difficult shape. There's very significant gaps in the pavement, some offsetting, almost to the point that it's unsafe. We've had people approach us over time asking us to make the necessary improvements. So the town has put aside money and we've also gotten contributions from individuals and clubs as well as private, private, what's the word I want, organizations that make those types of contributions. And it's our plan to basically start over with the tennis courts, tear off the surface, start anew, all of the construction. People have shared with us that the courts were built on an unfortunately poor base and we will reconstruct the tennis court and also add pickleball courts, which the schools, the kids, the older adults are very active in and will bring more activity to the park. One thing with our park is we still have to maintain the park whether the users are there or not. So things that we can enhance the park so that the community will use it more is an advantage and you get some return on the investment that we've made to do that. So if any of you feel that your wallets are just a little bit thick with stimulus money, we're certainly going to take a contribution towards that project. So thank you on that. And we're going to go back to the Door County Tourism Zone and Linda, if you'd cover that for us, please?
Yes, thank you. The Door County Tourism Zone Commission was established back in 2007 and all 19 Door County municipalities are members and have representatives on the commission. We rotate monthly meetings between the full commission and the executive board. All of those meetings for this past year have been via Zoom, of course. As of April 2021, there are 1,310 lodging permits issued for all of Door County. I'll give you some background on numbers for last year. Room revenues, so that is hotel, motel, all lodging establishments, room revenues were roughly 87.7 million for 2020 and that compared to 94.6 million in 2019. So a slight decrease probably due to the pandemic and the health situation. As far as room tax collections for 2020, this past year, room tax collections amounted to 4.8 million compared with 5.1 million for 2019. Again, a small, slight decrease there. For the town of Sebastopol, in 2020, we collected $102,477 as our 30% share of room tax compared with $101,895 in 2019. So we actually collected more room tax in 2020 than we did in 2019. And looking ahead to this year, according to the tourism's last report, January tax collections are already up 25% over January of the previous year. So that is a good sign. Items on the table for the zone include a proposed room tax increase. The current rate is 5.5% and the proposal is to increase that to 8%. So far, that has been supported by nine or 10 municipalities, I'm unsure right now, but it's nine or 10. And that would require 13 of the total 19 municipalities in order to pass that increase. In conjunction with that increase, there's also, there would also be a proposed restructuring on distributing, on distribution of the room tax collections. Currently, 30% comes back to the municipality, 66% goes to destination Door County for promotion and 4% is allocated to the zone for operational and administrative costs. The proposal is go, is to go to a straight 30% to the municipalities, full 70% to destination Door County and with the municipalities paying directly for the zone operation. There are also some legislative bills on the table out there. Hopefully, this will put some vim and vigor and some strength in order to get the marketplace providers to comply. And when I say marketplace providers, I'm talking about Airbnb, vacation rental by owner, Travelocity and the, and the such. To get them to comply with forwarding the tax, the room taxes that they are collecting on behalf of the lodging owners, making sure that it gets to the proper municipality and also timely. So the zone has been very proactive. I was on a Zoom call the other night with Wisconsin Towns Association, trying to get our legislators to understand the importance of remitting the tax and getting it to the proper municipality. The annual meeting for the tourism zone will be held on Thursday, July 15th at 9:00 AM. Right now, it is planned to be a Zoom meeting, so.
All right, thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Next up is Ms. Vogel, who will, who is the chair of our Communication and Technology Committee and she will share with you a vast array of information.
Wow, really? Okay.
Tried to build it up as best I could.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to thank the members of the Communications and Technology Committee. They would be Jim Michie, Paul Wickman, Paul Kestrel, Stephen Toczewski and Derek Demese. Also, thank you, Laddie, for all your efforts on behalf of the town, providing content and running the PEG channel, using your expertise to video our town and committee meetings. The committee met several times in August and September to negotiate the videographer and independent contractor contracts with Laddie. In the course of our discussions, we concluded it was important for the town to have its own YouTube channel rather than use Laddie's channel. We hope to have it established in May. In our efforts to respond to the need for reliable internet service, the committee recommended the town partner with Door County Broadband to apply for a Public Service Commission matching grant. Of the towns in Door County that submitted applications, only the town of Washington, Washington Island, was awarded a grant. We are hopeful that the federal funds from the American Rescue Plan, which Dan referred to a short time ago, along with the funds that maybe come available from the state, can be used to fund reliable service to our town, for our town. Here's a request. If any property owner here tonight or listening on our PEG channel or YouTube, if you have an interest in locating a broadband tower on your property, very specifically, it would be very helpful was happened to be Town Line Road. I say that because it would benefit three municipalities, so it would, it would benefit more than just our community. Think we have to keep that in mind. So please contact me or the clerk, Amy, at town office if you would consider. I'm sure you share the goal and determination to do whatever we can to bring and provide reliable internet service for our children, educators, neighbors and business owners. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
I, I might add that we did make a number of presentations and requests with the Sebastopol School Board to have them join us in a partnership in the application for this grant. And as I'm sure some of you are parents, you know, there are a lot of areas in the community where there's little or no internet service and/or the school is providing cards for access using dial-up, I shouldn't say dial-up, but cell service. So we are working in partnership with them. If you happen to go to a school board meeting, you might want to follow up with them as well and encourage their continued participation in our trying to achieve a mutual goal. So thanks, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
I feel sorry for Linda, she gets another shot here. Door County Coastal Byways?
Oh, I like this one though. Well, I like them all, but. The Door County Coastal Byway, the town of Sebastopol and myself have been very deeply involved with the Door County Coastal Byway. It's a collaboration and intergovernmental agreement among eight municipalities. And in 2009, we were fortunate enough to be awarded, excuse me, Wisconsin Scenic Byway status, okay, excuse me, frog in my throat. Wisconsin Scenic Byway status. And just recently in February of this year, after much work among our council and especially our council chair, Ann Miller, from Liberty Growth, we achieved national scenic byway status. So we're very proud of that. It's a feather in our hat. And with that award, we also hope to improve our website and our exposure a little bit to make our website more user-friendly to the visitors that come to Door County. So both 42 and 57 pass through the town of Sebastopol. So whether you're starting up 42 or starting up 57, either way, you start and end in the town of Sebastopol. It's a 66-mile loop that goes up to Northport and back down. And with this award, we mentioned this at the meeting last night and will probably mention it in a newsletter to come out later this year, if the town could undertake sort of its own beautification campaign so that those residents and yards and whatever along highways, 42 and 57, take a look at your yard, is there something you can do that would enhance the visitor's experience to Door County? So again, we will mention that in our newsletter coming out this summer. We will have a grand reopening or ribbon cutting ceremony on June 17th. And this is going to be held at Lakeside Park in the town of Jacksonport, right on Highway 57. And the reason that location was chosen is because there are bathrooms there, there's plenty of parking with overflow parking available in the nearby ballfield. And there's also beautiful Lake Michigan as a scenic backdrop. We do expect to have officials there from not only the state level, but hopefully the federal level as well. So I think that is about it.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Next, we have a brand new appointed invasive species guru, Derek Denil. And we had a presentation last month as well from the county with respect to invasive species and I think he's going to tell you there's more than one.
Yep, thanks, Dan. There's, there's quite a few on the list for invasives. Amy sent out letters last month, month before, month prior. And we've received a handful of responses with approval for treatment of some parcels, residential parcels and also commercial parcels in the area. And thanks to Peninsula Pulse, they published an article a couple of weeks ago about Japanese knotweed. So Amy's been receiving a few phone calls from residents, wondering if there's still a program available. So yes, there is. We will be partnering with Jason Wilkie again this year, doing the, the control of it and spraying. And we've also received some donations, so I'd like to thank the people for that.
And there is some funding available from the county as well?
Yes, there's a cost share program with the county that certain types of invasive species will be covered for.
Okay, good. And last but not least, we have the clerk, clerk or the treasurer? And last but not least, we have the clerk, who would, clerk or the treasurer, which one are we?
I'm going to be the clerk tonight.
You're going to be the clerk?
Yep.
Amy?
Um, so I'm, I'm going to talk about elections. So in 2020, um, we had four elections. The first one started in, in February. It was the spring primary. We had a total of 336 voters. And of those 336, we had 46 absentees. Then COVID hit, and we moved on to the spring election. We had a total number of, um, voters of 1,207. And of those, we had 1,040 of those being absentees. So we were very, very busy. Then pressing forward to August, we had the August partisan primary. The turnout was 775 voters. Of those 775, 517 voters were absentees. You see a pattern? All right. So November, we had the presidential election. The turnout was 2,112 voters, which is over 93% of our total voting population, which is amazing. Um, of those, we had 1,534 absentees. So when you're out there and you want an absentee and you go out to the MyVote system, that request comes directly to your local clerk. So it doesn't go to just anywhere where they stamp your name on stuff. It comes to me or whoever your clerk is. So once we get that request, uh, we issue the ballots as long as you provide us with the, you know, your ID and everything else that we need. Uh, we're required by law to put those, the stamps on to return the envelopes. So, um, if you don't desire to mail it back, it's, we still have to put it on there. So that's just a little bit of an overview of 2020.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right. Before we move on, any questions on any of these topics from anyone on the floor? We'd be happy to. All right, you're very quiet.
Just real quick.
Yes.
What the satellite, uh?
Starlink?
Yeah. Is that something that's going to help us out?
Well, right now, Starlink is in beta testing. I, I, Derek happens to be a beta tester right there, Derek Demese, who happens to serve on the, on the committee. Uh, so Derek kind of sends the things to me, and then I pass some things on here and there. I'm also, um, in touch with someone on the steering committee for the Door County Economic Development Corporation, who is, who they're, they're doing a study. And what their goal is to, is to actually map everything so we know exactly, you know, what fibers in the ground, you know, where, you know, what's, you know, what's needed in general in the, so. As far as, um, I haven't read all the articles. I'm still going to catch up on the, on Starlink. It's not clear what, they have a lot of satellites up there right now, uh, that they have launched. It's not clear what the coverage will end up being, what the cost, the final cost to people. I mean, it's a subsidized cost for these beta testers. I think they paid around $500 for the equipment, which I think the actual cost is closer to three grand, maybe. And then they're paying about $99 a month, I believe. Um, it's not clear where that's going, um, price-wise. You know, affordability, you know, one of the things that, that, that I think about is, um, we have a lot of, if, if the school's any indication, we have a lot of kids either on free or reduced lunch, which means there's not a lot of dollars out there for families to spend, um, for internet coverage. So, you know, you know, Starlink may be the answer on some basis for some folks, and it's supposed to be, it, the whole premise, I understand, is, is for the, um, rural people, you know, how rural is rural? And I've seen some, I've seen some feedback on, on some, where people chat back and forth about Starlink and their coverage that Derek's provided me. And, um, the coverage is great, from my understanding. And, you know, really fast. But you also have people that, um, are, are using it that aren't necessarily, they may have some other thing available to them. And the whole, the whole point of Starlink was, is, I understand, is to provide rural coverage for, you know, places that, there's no other way, right? So I think the verdict is out. I think we're going to learn more about it, um, not too long from now. The, the, the study that's going on is supposed to be completed by the end of October. Um, I'm hoping that, because I have communication with some of the folks on that steering committee, that I'll have more information. I'll be able to share of, maybe a few months down the road when the study really gets in full swing. The, there's really good people on the steering committee that, you know, very knowledgeable people. Both from, someone from DPI is actually on it. The, uh, people that really have been involved in trying to bring better internet coverage to our area for a long time. Some folks from Liberty Grove. And so, uh, I think it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of information. We just, um, last night voted to, um, uh, donate some money, uh, for the study. And I'm, I'm, I'm really hoping that we're going to learn a lot more. You know, because you can't rely on the maps that, that are built. It's just, they're not accurate.
You made the investment in a bunch of towers and some, or something that are, you know, that affects scenic beauty, you know, and that future technology is going to eliminate all that. That's, I, I just don't know what.
Well, I, I think.
Future whole, what they eliminate, you know?
Well, I think we're, I, I think when you, the, the, one of the things they're going to be working on, it's, it's, it's going to be a, basically a 10-year plan. So I think they're working on, uh, really a lot of, they hope to have a, quite a bit of fiber in some fashion and be able to work, you know, towers off of where needed. As you are well aware, um, our, our soil or lack thereof is a real problem when it comes to fiber. But that is the absolute most reliable, uh, is fiber.
Well, just, what happened is, there was no bandwidth this summer. My son was here from San Francisco, trying to avoid the COVID. And he had to go back because he didn't have good internet access.
That's our challenge.
It's just, a lot of people want to kind of live up here, but they're relying. And everything's changing. They need that, it does.
Exactly, our challenge.
Door County is, so.
Yes, and, and.
Really needs it.
Right, and the challenge for our future, um, you know, a lot of folks that are retiring here, that's one thing. But what we, we also really need is, we need people that want to come here and work. And, um, and they need the internet. And, and then, and therefore, they, they have children, and they're going to want their children to have the internet. You know, and we just can keep going on that. So, so yeah, we definitely have the need. And that's why I think I'm so glad that this, this study is happening. And, um, you know, that we're going to make some, hopefully some progress. And of course, there's also some dollars, you know, uh, coming. So I, I'm very hopeful.
Okay. Anything else? All right. The next item on our agenda is visions, visions or future needs and/or projects. And this is basically a two-way conversation. If there are things that you as electors feel that merit our attention in terms of a project or an undertaking, or something that we might start building towards at some particular time. So if any of you have any specific ideas, uh, you know, I'd like to have a, a large, uh, fire tower in my backyard or an observa, you know, whatever. I mean, anything that comes to mind that we could put on our list of things to investigate or make potential investments for in the future. So, anyone from the floor have anything with respect to that? Okay. Anyone from the board that we have not already solicited input from? All right. Then the next item would be the electors' concerns from the floor. So if there's someone here that has a specific concern they'd like to address, we'd be happy to hear that from you. This is going to be a very quick meeting today.
I would like to bring up the subject of SDRs. You've all received, um, correspondence from lawyer, David Thompson. And I know what you can do in the annual town meeting is limited, you know? I just want to start the discussion of possible solutions. And sometimes public meetings is the way to do it, sometimes it is not. Having lawyers in the room, the way of corresponding, I don't think that's the correct solution either. I just think that, uh, we actually have a resolution that we would like to introduce. And it's up to you if you would accept it, or if you want to do that for the next step.
You're one step, you're one step ahead of me, but if you prefer that, that's fine.
No, I just wanted to realize that, that would be the next step. But my own concerns with SDRs is that I'm concerned about parking, noise, water quality, and everything as well. However, I think SDRs should not be singled out for that. I think it should be across the board with everyone. You know, I don't like when a neighbor shoots fireworks out all the time and shoots and scares my dogs. There's things, and the global problems in this county are getting worse in totality. Too many people and everything going through Sister Bay in the summertime. You know, I get it. I understand it. But we should be having that conversation with all entities and not just singling out SDRs. And I believe that you could have a neighbor who is doing something violating their septic looking Mr. Deep Ballroom, they're dumping it in the creek. Those things could happen to anywhere. So we should be enforcing nuisance ordinances across the board, not just with SDRs. And the group we have, the Door County, what we call Door County Vacation Rental Association, we support enforcing those things, getting rid of the bad actors. The people that aren't accountable, I don't want that. It makes a bad name for anyone in Door County. And we would like to get the discussion. And, and I understand that you are unincorporated. That was under Planning Commission in Liberty Grove. I tried very hard to get some things through, but we are only advisory to the county. So I would rather have this discussion on a county-wide level with everyone. And I've already talked to DeGlino and everybody, they've already started the discussion with, with Marsha and other entities. I talked to Steve Zolans today with Gibraltar. Everyone is concerned about it. But instead of talking and doing, I think we should be talking about what we can do to alleviate this. I will say, I put on my other hat, you know, I'm a contractor. I benefit from these people on the water. So now you're starting to affect my livelihood by limiting SDRs. And in six, one of the six days, you're basically going to restrict SDRs, most of them. I think will go out of, out of business. And thus, those people won't hire me to do work. And thus, it just goes on and on and on. And then our tax rate, you know, we've got, what, $100,000, over $100,000 a year? How much of that is SDRs? And how much of that will affect our taxes when our taxes have to go out? I just, I just think there's better ways of going about it without affecting people's livelihood. We should direct it at the people that are abusing it and force nuisance ordinances across the board. And, and the other thing too is when, when we travel, I've traveled 20 different countries around the world. That's all we use exclusively is Airbnb. It gives us a chance to see the true flavor of the country. If I had come to Door County and there's no Airbnbs, only motel or hotels, we wouldn't come here. I don't want to be stuck in a motel room. I want to experience the true flavor, the unique experience of what that country or that place has to offer. And that's why Airbnb and SDRs, what, what have you, call it what you want. That's why it's taking up. People want that experience. Families want that experience. They want the ability to cook, they want the ability to be outside. They want the ability just to escape COVID and everything. So, I mean, I just think that, uh, communication should be involved on the, um, on the effects of everything for our agenda. And I think it should be on a county-wide level.
Well, I think the Plant Commission's had this project for quite some time. It probably started two years ago. There's been a lot of input, both positive and negative, on both sides of the coin in terms of this issue. There are just as many people that feel strongly about the changes in their residence, residential neighborhoods as a result of SDRs. There's issues regarding licensing. There's issues, there's, there's a variety of issues. There are three or four that we have discussed continually that need to be addressed, and we're looking to do that at the town. It's still a draft. And those issues revolve around private wastewater, over occupancy of units, having a focal point or contact person so that if you have a neighbor next door that has a rental unit and has a problem, you know, who to contact, who to reach out to. There are multiple things, uh, that are in that ordinance that make sense. I hear some of the comments that you've made. I've heard some of the comments you made. I don't know that, uh, it's possible for a, a county-wide program. You know it probably as well as anybody that trying to get the county to do anything, 14 or 18 different towns, is almost impossible. So, you know, we've taken the lead and with respect to this, it's still in draft status. There is continuing, um, dates for Plant Commission meetings, as well as the public hearing that's set up for May 11th for input only. And then after that, uh, the Plant Commission will meet again to try and adjust as needed. And then they will make a recommendation to the town board. Our tentative timetable is to try and do that, uh, in the May timeframe, the May meeting timeframe. So we're still a month out, uh, from that particular point in time. But, uh, it's basically, at this point in time, we have set an agenda that we're going to attempt to follow. And modification to the draft will occur, potentially occur after the hearing when the Plant Commission has an opportunity to understand, further understand any open issues, concerns from both sides. And then the board will have another opportunity to, to, to attempt to digest that and make some decision on where to go with it. There's just as many people that would like us to do something right away as there are that don't want us to do anything. And it's, uh, it's, it's going to be a, a difficult process to go through, no, no different than what we went through with the Quarry Project. And I think you were here for that. So, um, anyway, I, I appreciate your comments. I understand them. We've, we've had hundreds, hundreds of documents and phone calls that have all been shared by committee members and by everybody on this board. Yes, sir?
Will there be a draft of that ordinance prior to that Tuesday, May 11th meeting?
I'm sorry, will there?
Will there be a draft?
There has been a draft of every version of it on our town website. And the fin, there will be a final draft put up there. Your last meeting is next week.
It will probably go up on Wednesday, April 28th.
Yeah. There will be a final draft.
The most recent draft will be posted Wednesday, April 28th.
Prior to the hearing. So you'll be able to review that and draw any conclusions or input or however you'd like to do it. We have, since we're on this topic, uh, I covered it last night. Uh, I'll just touch on it again because with COVID, as you can see today, we have limited seating availability. We want to be able to prove, put this on our public access channel. We want to be able to put it on YouTube live. The only place we can do that is here. So we have a sign-up list. You're not required to sign up to speak, but we will try to create a list so that if you know you're number 18 on the list and there's three minutes per speaker, we will try to give you a ballpark time so that you can come in and say your piece. Give an opportunity to talk to the board. If you don't want to register, at the end, uh, of the evening, anybody that's not registered will be given an opportunity to speak. There will be a three-minute time limit. You can call the town clerk and register to, to come in. We have an overflow seating if you'd like. Uh, there'll be a television set playing at the Institute Saloon in their back, uh, ball, hallroom, ballroom. So if you have, you want to go over there, we have internet outside the building as well. So we'll try to provide as many ways so, so that you can see what's being said. It will not be an interactive meeting, meaning the Plant Commission and the board members will not be providing feedback. They will simply be taking input and listening. And then they will have a meeting subsequent, subsequent to that to adjust as necessary. That's, I think I covered 99% of what I talked about yesterday. All of this will come out and we'll publish the hearing dates. It'll be in the paper. It'll be on our website. Everything I've just discussed will also be out there so that if you have any questions, you'll find it there. And if there's any questions, you're certainly welcome to call the town clerk. She's abreast of this as much as anyone. So, uh, any other comments, concerns? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, can I just, I've written, um, comments that come into the supervisors. How is that going to be handled?
Every written comment that's come in from. Every written comment that's come in from day one has been dispersed, either emailed out to every board member or given hard copy, as well as to every board member that's sitting here, so.
And then if it's available, is that available for public viewing as well?
I don't know why not. We did have one of the board members, two, a couple months, a couple meetings ago, synopsed.
Right. We do have a summary.
Right.
We have a summary of comments.
Right.
If the actual letters or correspondence would be available somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, it's public, yeah, if you wanted to, if you really wanted to have some fun, we make it available. But, yeah, in addition to all of the written comments, we've had numerous phone calls from parties all over the place, so it's not like we have not received feedback on this. And so when we get to the hearing, you know, if you have a different approach, an idea haven't shared, we'll take it in written form or whatever, you know, we'll take a look at it, and that's the whole intent. We, by the way, are not, well, let's just say, we're going to do everything we can to try and get it right. And Mike, I just want to back up to one thing, too. At the most recent meeting, and I think I mentioned this last night as well, the current draft, the draft, final draft that you will see, has a one stay and six day. So that's the output from the last plant commission meeting. Anyone else have question, concern? Hearing done? All right. That being the case, we're going to come close this meeting out with a few announcements.
Dan, I would like to introduce this.
Sorry, go ahead. Sure.
Is that okay? Resolution of the electors of the town of Sebastopol. Whereas the municipality of Sebastopol is an unincorporated town organized under Chapter 60 of Wisconsin statutes, whereas the town plan commission and board of supervisors are in the process of bringing forth new regulations pertaining to licensing and operation of short-term rentals and tourist rooming houses located within the bottom areas of the town, whereas tourist rooming houses, cottages, cabins, and homes make up approximately 30% of lodging tax revenues in Door County, whereas globally and nationally, the average length of stay in a tourist rooming house is approximately four days. Whereas in Door County, between 2008 and 2020, lodging permits for tourist rooming houses increased by 104%, and in 2020 represented 26.9 million in total lodging revenue. Whereas tourist rooming houses are the only segment of the lodging industry in Door County that has demonstrated a consistent increase in the number of available room nights, generating additional lodging revenue to support town and destination marketing efforts. Whereas guests who stay in tourist rooming houses support many small businesses, including retailers, restaurants, live performance venues, cleaning and property maintenance, and management services, including my own company. Therefore, be it resolved by the electors of the town of Sebastopol, that the town board of supervisors is directed, or I would say advised, to directly engage the short-term rental operators and destinations in Door County in mediation efforts prior to drafting any final rules or ordinances concerning regulation of tourist rooming houses as allowed under Chapter 6060.1014 of Wisconsin statutes before their place before, for consideration. This resolution is done 20th day of April, 2021.
All right. We can, just so you understand, are the resolutions done at annual meetings are advisory only?
Correct.
And I have no issue in taking a vote on that, but just so you understand, it is not something other than a future board consideration.
Understood.
So we have, I mean, we have pretty much everybody here is an elector, correct?
Emily, there is one person from Sturgeon Bay. Sturgeon Bay? Everybody else is a resident, is that correct? Okay.
Okay. So all those, yeah, go ahead.
Who is submitting this resolution, Mr. Chair?
This is, and might be a Door County Vacation Rental Association.
Well, Door County Vacation Rental Association is not an elector.
I understand that, but there are electors that are part of that in this room.
Doesn't make a difference. It has to be from an elector, Mike.
Well, consider my, consider it from myself and the elected.
All right. Then you'll have to change the resolution to reflect that.
Well, I didn't, I didn't put it in there anyway with that name. It just says, "Resolution of the electors of the town of Sebastopol."
Okay, submitted by?
Correct.
You.
Correct.
Yeah. So we can do a show of hands, if those people are in support or against, and go from the candle, but that's okay. You have a question? You just jumped the gun on the vote, that's all. So you have an opinion?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay. So all those.
Could you please read the wherefore, or the therefore it is resolved, so that we know what we're voting on? Again, please.
Go ahead.
It was mediation.
Therefore, be it resolved by the electors of the town of Sebastopol, that the town board of supervisors is directed to directly engage the short-term rental operators and destinations in Door County in mediation efforts prior to drafting any final rules or ordinances concerning regulation of tourist rooming houses.
Thank you.
For information, too, we have had that offer already made to us by Jack Money Penny on behalf of the executive committee, so we are aware of that. Anyway, anything else from anyone else on the board? Questions? All right. So if you'd like to take a vote on that resolution, we'd be happy to do so. So all those in favor signify by raising your hand. I didn't count them, sorry.
Ten.
One, ten?
Ten.
We've got ten. Those opposed? And the board is allowed to vote, too, so it's up to you. So we have one, two, three, four. All right. So we have 10, four. All right, we will accept your resolution. Would you please make sure that it comes from yourself or a town elector? And as I indicated, it's advisory only, so it will end up being part of the plant commission. It will get distributed at the bell. All right. Anything else from anyone else? All right, good math. Couple announcements. The open book, which is your opportunity to sit down with the assessor and look at the value of your property as compared to your neighbors or whatever, is Friday, May 28th at 10:00 a.m., and it's going to be done as a virtual, you can contact them, set up an appointment. The board review, which is the next step after that, if you're not satisfied with the results, would be Monday, June 28th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. That's what the town board here. And we will adjourn to the annual meeting, which will be scheduled for next year, April 19th, at 2022, which is the third Tuesday in April.
Mr. Chairman, if there's one of the first business, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I would accept that motion. Motion by Laddie, second by?
Sure, I second.
All right, second by you. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, really turn. Thank you.